Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for many blessings. We're thankful for the the beautiful weather we've been receiving, and we're thankful that our farmers or ranchers are able to get their work done. We're thankful for Heritage Week last week and the great community support we had for the events that we held. We ask thy blessing upon us that we may make wise and judicious decisions for our community. We're thankful that we are able to represent them here on council. Let me say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Consulor. Well, today is the 11th of August. It's hard to believe we're already mid-August, and we have a regular town council meeting. And we appreciate having our faithful media, Channel 32, Corey McCarthy. Thank you so much for being here. We have, we're going to call the meeting to order. We have an agenda.
Removed the agenda.
Thank you. Any comments? All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so we have in our gallery, we have Mrs. Sharon Jensen. Thank you for coming here. She is the president of the Rotary Club and is going to make a presentation and ask for a donation. Would you please come here? Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. I don't know how much of a presentation it's gonna be, but I had some of our members come and they had talked to you before. The Carston District Health Foundation last year for their golf tournament had their green fees waived as part of a donation, and we were wondering if that might happen again for, if that would be able to be possible for the Rotary Club for our September 18th, 2020 golf tournament that we're going to have this year. I know in it, we partner with you guys, and I know you've done so much with the Spray Park and the playground and stuff, but Rotary Club still continues that pretty well, over eighty percent of any money that we actually make actually goes back to locally. So we're always trying to put it back into local activities. I mean, we've run festivals and stuff for over fifty years, and so we'd love to be able to continue that. This year is a little different because we won't probably be able to do our dine and dance. Somehow four hundred people in one in the elementary school just isn't going to work with that. So we just thought we would see if you guys would entertain that for the Carson Rotary Club for September 18th this year.
Okay. Thank you for this. Questions for Mrs. Jensen? Paula?
What is the next plan? What is your next fundraising?
Fundraising. So what we're fundraising right now is to make sure, because we did the Spray Park, we want to make sure that we do have enough funds to be able to do like the free public skating that we always donate every year. And so that's, we're trying to make sure that we have enough money for those things. And also, we're going to be looking at putting, helping with the Lions because the gazebo was taken down because of the Spray Park. So that's actually, we're kind of going to take this year, raise some funds, and then we're looking at actually, how do we do that so that we can recognize Burke, was it?
Gibb.
Burke Gibb, you know, again. So whether it's through a structure or more picnic tables and stuff. So that's really, we want to be able to complete that. So that's completed and that the Lions Club feels that that hasn't been just taken away from them.
All right. So thank you so much for coming to council, and we will discuss that later on in our meeting.
Thank you.
And administration will be in touch with you.
Appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you so much for taking the time. All right. As you can see, we have two more delegations, but they will be in closed sessions. So we have a meeting, minutes of the July 14th, a regular meeting of council. So we need to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the meeting of council of the, let me find my time here, July 14th, 2020.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. All right. So let's go under item six, donation request. The Rotary Club waiver our fees for the golf tournament as a fundraiser. Who wants to address this issue? We, I know we have mixed feelings, so let's be honest about that. The feeling is not that donation is something that we do not do, but at this time with the Spray Park, we have been hit pretty, pretty hard in trying to make the Spray Park come to life. And right now, we're not done with the spending of money, considering that we have an issue with water pressure, and we need to find a way to reduce that. As you could probably have heard, on Sunday, we had an issue. There was a valve that blew out, and there was some flooding in the mechanical room. So that is something we now need to address since the park is now ours. And we're three weeks in the making, not even, and we already have an expense here. So that expense could be anywhere between $3,000 and $25,000. We're not hundred percent sure where in between that will land. So I don't know if we really have any more money.
So is there not a warranty on this, or is this work that we've done?
Good question, Consulor.
Yeah, the company's been great. They've been onsite tweaking what they can, but they're saying we just simply, the pressure might be too high coming into the building. And so they're asking us to do some kind of pressure reduction. It's just rattling everything every time the valves turn off and on. So Bart's getting a number of options to see what we can do there.
So under those circumstances, as you can see, money is not flowing. I understand the conundrum the Rotary is facing because I cannot raise funding, fund this year through the regular means. I totally understand that. But I'm sure I can also understand her difficulty at this time. Consulor Bengey?
My concern is, if you go out to the golf course, it's going leaps and bounds this year. It's doing phenomenal. And if we grant this request, that means we have a real good day closed down to the public.
Which is true.
And I just, my concern is, is there's golfers out there that would probably want this day, and how much can we give one club? And it doesn't really fit under our donation policy.
That is true.
And so my concern is, I think we're gonna have to leave this one alone this year.
Okay. Thank you, Consulor.
You made the comment mixed feelings. I have really mixed feelings on this because
Yeah.
I would love to help them, but we already gave much more to this Spray Park than we had originally budgeted for.
Yeah.
We had to pull extra money from it. And the golf course also, that we own that, and it's another project that we need to be able to make money. And if we give away, from what I understand, it was three or four thousand bucks last year, that's a big profit. That, they can't make that back up. So I have my concerns about.
This year is a tough year for all of us. We're all strapped.
Yep.
Consulor Silk?
Hey, I think there's two things to this, two ends of this spectrum. One, the Rotary Club, no other club in this town does more for the town than the Rotary Club.
It's true.
No other club in this town gives more back to the town than the Rotary Club. So what they're looking at doing is what we asked them to do. You bulldoze the gazebo, we want you to put a picnic covering lid, whatever you want to call it. And that's what they're looking to do, is what we asked them to do. You're right. On the other hand, we have spent a lot of money on Rotary projects. So I guess it boils down to, do we just go ahead and build what they're looking to build? Or do we actually donate the golf course? The 18th of September is a Friday, so it's not Tuesday or Thursday, which are the days that are extremely busy at the golf course.
Consulor Drew?
Oh, just again, going back to the quote that Jeff said, we're talking $3,000 to $25,000. Yeah, so I'm just wondering if it's on the low end, is that, I mean, if it was $25,000, then I could see us saying, well, maybe we can't do that this year. But I think I tend to agree with Consulor Silk that they do a lot for the community, and if it is on that lower end, I think we should be able to do that. But that's just me.
Consulor Brown?
So I support this. I understand what every, what majority of council is saying, but I, I do feel that this is important. And I do feel also that when people come to these tournaments, they're coming from all over, and they're coming to our course, and then they go home and tell ten people to come golf at our amazing course. And that's just good business. So I think it does come around full circle. And it's not like the golf course is losing us money this year. Hopefully, things are looking good that way. I think, like Consulor Silk said, name another group that is put back into Carston like they have. So I support this idea.
No one can deny what they have done for the community. No one.
No.
The only thing that we need to be careful of is always
Money.
The purse of the taxpayer.
Okay, I'm gonna counterpoint my own argument. If there is another group, like I would be in support of this, but if there is another group that's looking for a, a donation of tee times at the golf course, that's not the Health Foundation, not the Rotary, if there's nobody else that comes forward in the next few weeks, then I would probably say, give it to the Rotary Club because they're gonna do something with it. If there is another group that can do something with this and on a day that, maybe a Wednesday or whatever, then I could support that as well.
Okay, so here is where we need to decide as council. How many organizations are we willing to help with a donation through free golfing? Because as, as Mrs. Jensen referred to, she talked about the Carston District Health Foundation, and she says, I got that donation. We want the same privilege. My worry is that we open doors a little wide, and then what do we do?
But I think when we-
We need to be fair, right?
I think when we, when we look at this, though, I, I think when we talked about it, like, three years ago, when we first got put on council, we looked at this and we thought, our agreement, I assumed, was, okay, you get it this year, then the next year, your group gets it. Then the next year, your, I thought that's kind of how we wanted this to work, if possible.
I don't know that we have a policy to that effect.
It wasn't the policy. It was the discussion around the table. We wanted it to be spread out. We didn't want the same group getting it every time. And so this is a different group than it was the last year. And this is the only one, I believe, Jeff, that has come to us this year. Is that right? For, for this?
One thing I'll mention is we, because of COVID restrictions, we haven't hosted as many tournaments. In fact, Alex has been doing tournaments quite a bit differently, where he's simply booking you in tee times and not shotgunning starting, so we're not closing the course. He'll just book, you know, forty consecutive tee times. And that way, the course is open for people before and after. So we've been a little more discriminating with, with tournaments this year, and because it's been so busy. So we haven't had other requests to waive any fees at this point, to your question.
Okay. All right. So you raised an interesting point. Is the Carston Health Foundation trying to do a fundraiser also this year? Do we know that?
They do one every year.
Right. And so which is the one that will have that? Did Rotary get, get it last year or not?
Health Foundation did.
Oh, and so that's fair enough.
You could also say that about the Agro Dome. The Agro Dome, we've given them free ice for three years in a row.
Yes, correct. It's the same kind of story, right?
Exactly.
Where we don't have a policy really to regulate all that, and maybe sooner or later, we, we should think of one so that we don't have those kind of discussions at the table once and for all. We will have something that kind of makes sense. Yes.
This appears to be taking it out of one pocket and putting it in the other. If Rotary doesn't raise the money, they don't put the money into whatever they're gonna do, and then we wind up picking up, maybe picking up the town for, say, a shelter or something.
Sure.
So it's, that's a way of looking at it. I also understand, you're saying, how often do we give different groups? I was just thinking of the Monument Group down here. Are they gonna be coming looking for a golf course tee time and save some money that way? It's not as, quite as simple as it looks. And we have given the Rotarians, well, it says a hundred and something thousand. I'm thinking it's probably closer to two hundred over the last five or six years. So, but they put it back into the community, which means we get to operate them. But it's still a good thing to have, so.
Okay, so if we heard Mrs. Jensen write, what she was trying to say, the money would be a little bit of seed money for a fundraiser for project, but it's also mainly to work towards a gazebo or whatever would take the place of the gazebo. So is that something as Consulor Silk was saying, do we take that on? What does administration has to say about that one?
Well, I'm the Grinch in this one. So the tournament's going to happen whether or not council donates the green fees, and the same people that will come and play in the tournament are gonna come play whether or not you, the, the participants have no idea whether or not you're donating, and their fees don't change. And this has been a viable tournament for, I don't know, thirty, forty years for the Rotary. I've played in it numerous times. It's a good tournament. So the tournament's gonna happen either way. It's just simply how much profit margin on the fundraising for the Rotarians. I, I get concerned about waiving. I totally understand why you would approve this, by the way. I fully do. I always just get concerned about waiving the total fee because now there's no revenue and we turned away everyone else that was gonna play that day. Now, September 13th, I don't know what the tee sheet looks like for that day. I just don't know. And so we may not have that much opportunity cost. If it's anything like, well, like last year, we were almost in the dead of winter by September 13th.
That's right.
But we were just a couple, ten days away from the dead of winter, as I recall. But it's hard to say because I can't speak to how busy that day would be.
Okay. So you clarified a few things. Thank you.
I, I'm a compromising kind of guy, and I'm prepared to, to make a motion that we waive half of it.
Okay.
Half that fee, not, not the whole fee this year.
Okay.
Because we're in a tight situation, too.
Okay.
That would be my motion.
Okay. So anybody wants to talk to that? Can you support that, Consulor? Okay. Consulor, Consulor Brown, could you support going halfway?
So, question to death. So half, so like-
What does that mean?
Yeah. What does, what does that actually mean?
So, um, we would charge them, I think we would charge them sixty dollars, no, sorry, 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 that's not right. Thirty-eight.
Thirty.
Thirty-eight bucks a player is what we would charge them. The Rotary sometimes will get eighty to a hundred players. So thirty-eight hundred bucks on the high side would be the waiver, plus the green fees we didn't take in for the day. And again, those are, those will be gone either way because of the tournament's on, right? So that's fine. And again, that might be a great time in September. Might be a quiet tee time day. So half of that is nineteen hundred bucks roughly, if they had a hundred players.
Is that normal? Is that their normal, what they normally have, a hundred players?
You know, I can't, it's, it's a well-attended tournament usually. In the past, the town has put a team in. So I haven't played, I've played a number of times. I didn't play last year. Scheduling was funny for some reason, so we sent staff. But we've always had a team in it. Probably eighty is a pretty solid number for them, I think. That's only twenty teams.
Okay, are we, does it answer your question, Consulor? Consulor Bengey? Can you go with a compromising solution?
Yeah, I can go with that.
Okay. Consulor Brown, I know your opinion. Consulor Drew?
Yeah, I think I'm okay with that.
Okay. Consulor Silk? All right. So you have a motion on the table. We're going to vote on this one. All in favor? Thank you. All right. And we appreciate the Rotary. Don't get me wrong. We truly do appreciate that. But this year is a different type of year.
Good time.
Six B, COVID-19 mask by law. I want to thank, I want, I want to thank really our intern JD for having done such an amazing job at compiling all the information you could find about that. Thank you so much. Now, there is, there is something interesting about the COVID mask by law. My first, my first line would be to say that we always in our town have decided to follow AHS ruling regarding the masks wearing as additional protection when you cannot be at two, two meter distance from each other, hockey, hockey length, hockey stick length between people. And that always has been our position. And the fact that AHS has not mandated municipalities to have a mandatory wearing of mask kind of gives me the feeling that there might not be a hundred percent in support of it, although they are recommending it when you cannot self-distance. And that's a very good recommendation, I think. Now, there are a lot of people who are, are concerned, even in our town, because they're really, their, their system is immunocompromised. And wearing the masks themselves does not protect them from germs of other people around them. And I understand that also. But I think that in our town, we have certain protocols that are in place as ourselves to not be next to each other when we are at a council table. We take in that precaution. Other precautions have been taken at the office. We have separations. Other precautions, when two people are in the same car, they have to wear masks. So it's not as if we are not supporting the idea when needed. Some towns have made it mandatory, and I understand that, as in Edmonton and Calgary region. They have definitely the need of protections. They have large spaces with a lot of people coming together. I do not know where you want to go with this one in our town, but I have the feeling that the community, number one, is very split on the idea. And number two, I have a concern about a bylaw that you cannot enforce in this town.
That's right.
We do not have the capacity to enforce a bylaw of that nature. But we should educate. So in Edmonton, they are going to fine people, well, they have a fine, a hundred dollar or a hundred fifty, something like that. But then they're saying it's not to be enforced, it's to educate. Well, do you need a bylaw to educate? Or are there better means to educate? Go ahead. Consulor Brown?
I wear a mask for a living at the dental office, and, and I'm against this. I see the importance of masks, but I have a huge problem with telling somebody to do it, and then there's no follow-through.
Yeah, well, that's my, that's my issue.
It just doesn't make sense to me.
No.
And I feel like, just like with Heritage Week, with all the planning and all the discussions around it, and talking to AHS and everything that Jeff had to do, I feel like they're not telling us to mandate it. They're telling us, as everyone is telling you, if you're immune compromised, you stay at home. My parents, if they go out, they wear masks, and that's great. But I shouldn't be fined for not wearing one.
Consulor Brown?
I have watched so many discussions about this situation. The latest one I watched was yesterday, last, last night, my wife and I watched. They just had a, in Australia, they had a big discussion there about these masks. So they showed the effectiveness of the masks that we're all using out here. And the only effective mask was the surgical mask, but they're saying that the public shouldn't be using them because the, the people in the hospitals and the health community need to have them, and there is a big shortage, and you can't get the public to start using that. But they were showing these masks, the ones that we're handing out, that we got from the province, you just take an aerosol spray and it just goes right through. And so, and they're saying that the thing that's been most effective over there in Australia is social distancing. And I think that that's where I'm at.
Well, that is-
And, and the other thing was, too, that come out on that, they were showing people that were getting sick that are wearing these masks all day long. They're getting moist, and they're making themselves sick. And so I'm, I'm not in favor of this.
Consulor Silk, any comments?
Um, sure. Less rules, better democracy.
Consulor Drew, you have a different perspective possibly?
No, I've just, I've been shopping with my wife in Lethbridge, and every store that we went into, I had to wear a mask.
Yeah.
And that was their store policy. In my shop, we have social distancing signs. I've got a barrier up. They can, they can wash their hands as they come in. But I wear a mask, and all of my staff wear a mask when we deal with people. That's just the way, in my little circle that I socialize with, I have people in my family who are at risk. And so we take those precautions because that's what we need to do.
All right, so-
I, I don't think that a bylaw is, I, I can't see Sean trying to-
No, the RCMP for that matter.
Exactly, right. It's just gonna be, I mean, it would be nice to be able to have everybody do that, but I just don't see that as something that's gonna happen.
So that brings us to the other item. How do we carry on educating the people? I have tried to do, to do that pretty well over the, over two months at least, through our release. And we have mentioned those important factors of washing hands, cleaning hands, social distancing.
If they don't get it after five months, they're never gonna get it. My wife also wears a mask all day long at the hospital, but she doesn't wear one outside of the hospital, unless we're in a closed area like a store.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I do not support a bylaw trying to enforce masks at all. That just doesn't think, I just don't think it can work.
Jeff?
Just for some additional context, we held our health sector meeting this morning. So Schnook Lodge is there, Lee Crest is there. Burn Emergency Management Hospital wasn't there today. She, her schedule was, was not allowing her to be there. Support Services was there. And so I asked a question to the group. I said, as the, the health sector community, and you deal with the most vulnerable of our residents in what you do, what is your thoughts as council deliberates on a mask by law? And their position, generally, I can't speak for all of them exactly individually, but generally, it was, each of our facilities has regulations regarding masks, and we enforce them strictly. We don't expect that to go beyond- We don't expect that to go beyond our facility in a bylaw form. They weren't prepared to jump behind this idea of making it a bylaw. It certainly, you know, I'm sure they would be compliant because they already have strict regulations around it. And then in the government sector meeting this afternoon, so fire department, town, county, RCMP, Alberta Emergency Management, we're all on that call. Again, about the same consensus. You can imagine the RCMP being very concerned that is every single person who sees another without a mask on phoning 911. You know, that terrifies them, that call volume goes through the roof for masks. And they are also cautious to send those types of infractions through the courts. The courts are already terribly backlogged, and they're not looking to send those types of infractions through there. So RCMP's position on this debate tonight was, please be cautious about how you're doing the enforcement side of it. He didn't say this, but I would respect him if he did. Please don't involve us in the enforcement. It's kind of what he wanted to say. But they would if it was a bylaw. But I can respect why they wouldn't want to be involved. And same thing with Alberta Emergency Management saying, look, Dr. Hinshaw is not asking you as municipalities to currently do that. However, you have the jurisdiction to do so. If you're responding to, I'm trying to think how Gary worded it. Basically saying, if you don't have a distinct issue you're responding to for this, you may do more harm than good by trying to force the issue. So his recommendation was just to be cautious and make sure that if we went down this road, we had maybe an issue or we had a large contingent of the population who refused to comply or who were actually being antagonistic to this kind of idea of being conscientious. So that was just some of the feedback I got today from my emergency management agency meetings.
Thank you. And by the way, the numbers in our areas, Kanai, Kaukun County, seven active?
As of an hour ago, it's eight, but eight active.
Eight active, which mean we no longer under the watch.
Or not.
Yeah.
Can I ask Jeff a question then? If, so if we decided to say, this is what we want to do, would we have enough masks available for everybody in our community and surrounding area?
Right, so we've got probably 10,000 left to give out still over the next few weeks. The county has about probably 12,000 to 15,000. But they're the disposable non-surgical, so you should be going through a few of those a day.
Exactly.
Per person. So, no, I'm not comfortable that we, so that was the other thing actually that Danny from the fire department brought up. He said, if you're gonna pass that bylaw, where can I go to get my box of free masks?
Exactly, yeah.
That was his question, is where do I go to get all the free masks you're making me wear? And so we have to consider that. And while supply is coming on stream better now, it's catching up. I mean, we'd probably need to find ourselves 50,000, 60,000 masks for the first while.
Right.
Because if you're gonna go through three or four a day, and I am, and everyone else is, and like the mayor said in the office, I've had two meetings in the last week where we all wore masks because that's what they were comfortable with. They came in with masks, so I grabbed one and threw one on, and we had a meeting. And we're just, we're trying to do that even within our meetings in the office. If we can't come up here and space out, we'll put a mask on.
Yeah, supply, sorry, supply and demand is the thing that I'm concerned about. If we pass a bylaw, and then all of a sudden the supply goes way down, then how do we?
Well, and costs go up, which we've already seen.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I know. I know the clinic is struggling to stay in enough masks. They're using multiple suppliers to keep enough, and the price is probably three times what it was pre-pandemic. There's that issue too.
Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Councillor Banbury, Councillor Self?
Last week, I attended a gathering, and the individual was a health practitioner. And he was wearing a mask through the constant presentation. Constantly, he wore masks through the presentation. But one comment he made, he says, I'm wearing a mask and you are not. I'm wearing it to protect you. He's, I deal with people who I don't know have it or not. And I thought to myself, you know, good for you. I was in a medical office this morning. I was asked to put on a mask. When I went in, when I went in to see the doctor, he said, you can take that thing off if you want, I'll keep mine on. So where do you go?
All right, so, thank you. Councillor Self?
What do we gotta do to move on from this topic?
No, I totally agree with you, but councillor, it's an important topic for a lot of people in this town.
Yeah, but I think the flavor around the table is nobody wants to do it, so.
Exactly right. So now that we heard from everybody, we know what we need to do.
I do just want to mention quick, I think it was important you had the debate. There are residents phoning saying, why isn't council doing, why aren't you doing what Edmonton's doing? Why aren't you doing what Calgary's doing? At least, the discussion has been had, right? That's what's important.
And I'm one who received those phone calls.
Yeah.
So it's important. For some people in the community who are even in their former life, who were nurses, they are extremely concerned. Interesting. Yes.
I understand the concern in those larger cities. There are so many people concentrated in a smaller area. They have hordes of people going into the malls and the stores and stuff like that. I understand that. We don't have that same situation here with 3,800 people. We just don't have it.
So what we need to do is keep a good eye on the numbers. Make sure that we're not finding themselves in a situation where the wearing of masks might become a protection for all. We're not at that level.
And keep our ears to AHS too.
And we will kind of follow the best practice that is given to us by AHS.
I would be comfortable with that. I think Alberta Health Services has outlined it well for us.
Yeah.
And we just need to follow the direction.
Be comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay, all right, let's move on. Six C, council anti-racism policy. As you could see, this was sent by, was it a legal firm, Jeff?
Yeah, Letson, yeah.
And an interesting policy to see the list. And I looked at the town policy that deal with similar kind of issue, except it's listed not on the racism as a policy, but it's listed on the harassment. But in a definition of harassment, it mentioned that harassment complaints can be based on race, color, national or ethnic origin, religion, sex, marital status, family status, mental or physical disability, pardon conviction, and sexual orientation, which is quite encompassing. So that kind of cover that. What it does not cover, in my opinion, and ask Jeff to kind of look at the council policy that talks about our behavior. It does not address what that racism policy does, which is how do we interact with not only employee, which the harassment policy covers us for that, but for ourselves in our business with the public? There is nothing there. And I was saying to Jeff, when we do a rewrite of that policy, we should probably update that to cover that because we as leader of the community should be extremely aware of that policy, which is a harassment policy, and to be extremely aware of our behavior and in language, verbal or in action with the public we come in contact with. And so, at this point personally, I don't feel the need to see another policy written, but up to you to decide.
I would send the letter back to them saying, thank you, but no thank you.
Councillor?
Agreed.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I think we pretty well covered under our policy. It's not that we don't have anything.
And can we modify our?
Yeah, we need to kind of trick it a little bit.
Cover some of that.
Yeah. Okay, under six D, donation request, Epic Youth Center. Now, that's an interesting request. Epic is largely funded by FCSS. And in the past, they receive about $600 from the Chamber of Commerce for their fundraising activity to buy T-shirts, et cetera. And refreshment, this year, they do not have that option. The chamber is not supporting that. So we have an option to kind of support the event a different way. Jeff, do you want to talk about the ability for home runs and things like that, that we can kind of participate a different way?
No, I was gonna be talking about it here. I just had mentioned that personally, I was sponsoring one of the participants in the activity and making a personal donation. But I don't actually want that to bear on your debate as a town making a donation.
That's another way people can help raise that money.
Participants all go out and solicit sponsorship for their activity, and it's a great activity. It's a great fundraiser, great, I mean, there's almost nothing negative here at all. It's a great organization with a great fundraiser. They just, one of their key sponsors backed out this year, and so they're looking for the town to make up the difference.
Okay, so here you go. Councillor Court?
Jeremy's a great guy, and if he's listening, I think he's great, what they're doing is great. But I've had these concerns presented to me by other members of the community. They feel, they get a little bit uncomfortable with a person that's collecting a wage fundraising helps. I don't know if this goes to his wage or what it does. But they're a little uncomfortable with Epic doing fundraising to pay somebody else's salary. Does that make sense at all, what I'm saying here?
Councillor Court?
Yeah.
If you looked at the donation request that goes strictly for T-shirts and for refreshment.
I understand, I'm just throwing out what I've been hearing in the community.
And so.
And I have no problem with this.
Aside from that, I heard comment like that also. So you wouldn't be the first person that heard those type of comment? So, yeah, there is a fine line there, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Again, I think Jeremy's doing a wonderful job, but that concern has been presented to me, so.
My thoughts are similar along the line to Jeff's. I personally made a donation for one of the participants in the Home Run Derby. And just looking at the donations that that particular person is getting, they're quite high.
Okay, so.
And he's done some really good fundraising techniques on Facebook. And some of the other participants could do that too. Maybe Jeremy could do something like that. I just, you know, this is a tight year for us. We can't just keep on giving out, and I'm already giving myself, and I have no problem making a donation at all.
All right.
I don't know.
So I think, I think I heard from a few of you. Anybody else would like to add?
Just to reiterate, I have grandchildren that use this service, so I mean, I understand.
I understand the support. Sometimes we have to kind of get ourselves out of that box and kind of look at the whole big picture. And we should look at the big picture, not at the person. Councillor Self? Do you support that? Or do you feel we leave people kind of participate in raising of funding?
I think it should be left up to the individuals to do what they want to do. And I think the significant contribution from FCSS to Epic is part and parcel of the town's donation.
Right. Through that.
Twenty percent of that.
Yeah, definitely. There is already a fair chunk of money that is donated that way. Councillor Banbury, do you want to add?
FCSS is town money, you know, we're supporting FCSS 100% sort of thing. You know, along with the combination, so I cannot see us doubling that support.
So Councillor Drew? Any?
I think there's other avenues that they can go down.
I'd be glad to donate 20.
Councillor Brown?
I support this.
Okay, well, go ahead. No, no, I mean, you're on FCSS board, of course.
I was just gonna say, I'm on FCS board. I know exactly how much they get. I also know how much work they get. I understand what you're hearing. But there are lots of nonprofits that have people that get wages. I don't think that, to me, is a problem. He's telling us exactly, and I can speak to his accounting with FCSS. He is all about being honest and upfront when handing out receipts. Everything we know is equal. We've never had any problems with him. So if he says he needs $500 for T-shirts and whatever it is that he needs it, I know that that's, money is going to be spent on exactly what he says it. He has accountability, and I respect that. So I understand what y'all are saying. I understand these are tight times. I 100% get that. But I also see the importance of kids in this community. And kids are really struggling. They're just really struggling right now, so I support it.
All right, so I appreciate that. Councillor Self?
If the guy I'm sponsoring hits 20 home runs, I'll be doing a fifth of that myself, so.
Well, you know, all right. So there's quite a few of us around this table that already have sponsored that. And together, even around this table, I can see that we almost raised a whole amount. They're asking us a donation. So I really feel that, at this time, what I'm hearing is that Jeremy carry on encouraging people to sponsor their home run, and they're going to receive their money pretty, pretty quick. To me, I think they pretty well have it right from this table.
Councillor Brown, wish to make a motion?
Yes, I do. I would like to make a motion to support the $500 for Epic Youth Services for their softball, what is it called? Their Home Run Derby held next, this Friday, for $500.
All right, so our councillor, just to tell you, if it was defeated, it's not because we don't support that. It's because the group around this table feel there's possibly a different way to kind of raise the funds. And we pretty well know that the funds are already raised.
So I was just curious about, do we not have an account for this kind of stuff? And have we used up all that money?
We don't. So we have, we only put about $1,000 for those general, what would be the word? Unanticipated would be the right word, donations. We've probably spent a few hundred dollars out of it. What I put in the RFD is normally this is a Heritage Week activity. It didn't come together this year for them, and so we could look at it there. I can't speak to Councillor Brown's budget on that one, though.
No. We're good.
Yeah, and so I guess to your question, Councillor Drew, does $500 upset the budget? No, it doesn't. But you also, there seems to be more of a principle approach to this discussion than that, than just a financial one.
All right, anybody wants to speak to that? Otherwise, I will call the question. All in favor? Okay, so please record one. Against? Thank you. And Councillor Brown, thank you for bringing this motion forward. For us, I think as a group, there is, Jeremy's actually going to find himself with more money than $500. All right, and we really support that ideas, but sometimes it's not always directly through a donation. Under seven, other business, Homeseeker Avenue Traffic Count. Jeff, you had a follow-up on what councillor had asked, and you came up with some numbers. And actually, from what you seem to have gathered together from those who did the traffic count, it was about 60% non-local, 40% local. Is that about the right ratio?
So I will say the local and non-local was probably the most subjective piece of data on there because the kids were simply looking, were they driving straight through? Were they stopping at one of the residences along the way? So it's difficult for them to know who all lives in every home and what vehicles they drive. So that one was a little bit tricky. But we did learn some interesting things about the percentage of heavy traffic and the sheer amount of traffic on the road. So I apologize, I just noticed on the agenda, I didn't combine the two items. There's an RFD Homeseekers and then the previous data from Homeseekers. So the RFD Homeseekers has the spreadsheet that shows the count. And yes, some interesting pieces. If you look at, if you take all of the types of vehicles. pieces, if you look at, if you take all of the types of vehicles, and then you, you take the large trucks, and then the number of trucks with trailers, what was my number there? So, about 17% of the traffic would be considered heavy traffic, and about 83% is simple passenger traffic, which I don't know if that surprises anyone or not, but it's about what it represents. And again, we thought we did a reasonably thorough sample, we did a number of days over a number of hours, so it's not like we just went out in an afternoon and did a count. So, it's certainly not bulletproof, but it's a reasonable sample. So, in my opinion, the heavy traffic was a little lower than I thought it might have been on that road. Again, over the course of the whole, what was, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 15 days, there was 61 trailers went by there. So, divided by 15 days, it's only four a day. So, it's, it's a little lower on the trailer and heavy traffic than I thought, and about 40-ish percent of that was, by our best estimations, local.
Okay.
So, that's what we can tell you, and really what it leads to is the question, it goes back to a couple of months ago, when we were talking about, if we look to do major improvements on that road, are we looking at a local improvement? And how much of that cost do we assign to the resident, at least to propose to them? Is it only 40% based on this number, or, you know, that's still a difficult number to pinpoint, but the bigger question is, is that let's say it's 50/50, let's just say, are we prepared to pay the other 50? Because these aren't small numbers, these are hundreds of thousands of dollars to redo the road. So, those are some of the things that we need to be considered by counsel at this point, and where we proceed from here.
All right, so, I appreciate the due diligence that was done on this file. It does not give us the answer to every question, certainly not about the cost to be paid by the local resident. Go ahead, Counselor Drew.
So, Jeff, did we put anything on that road?
Yeah, we put some dust suppression on it, I don't know, 10 days ago or something?
I was down that road doing some deliveries, and noticed that it wasn't very dusty, and it seemed to be fairly nice, and I thought, whoa, that's a quick fix.
And I must tell you, I must tell you that I had a conversation with Mr. and Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
I don't know where I saw them, but anyway, they are extremely appreciative and want to thank administration for having taken that step, because to their estimate, they can now sit on their front porch and enjoy a restful time without filling their lungs with fine particles of dust.
And wasn't that kind of the issue to begin with? Was it, it was a dusty road, and...
Well, it...
So, dust is always an issue, and then exacerbating the problem is, we can't put anything very permanent on it, because the roadbed simply breaks up. It's got, it does, no one's debating that the road is inferior. It's not good, it's got major soft spots in it in the spring, it doesn't have pit run under it, it doesn't drain well, it's, and Dr. Strang and Dr. Jones have both told you clearly, it's gravel on dirt, and then dirt pulled up to make ditches, and gravel on that dirt. And that's what the road is, and nobody on that road denies that, they watched it evolve over time. So, it really is something we have to take out and then rebuild, depending on to what level, but it certainly helps when it's been dry like this, and we can keep the dust down. That certainly helps.
The issue over time is the usage of that road. In the past, it was obviously lightly used, and now it's being used by 60% of the traffic, non-local, going right through.
Yeah.
And that's where the issue is, and that always is my question, is there a time where the town needs to look at that? And if that's becoming a thoroughfare, then do we have a responsibility to stop the traffic that is non-local and diverted, or to do something to accommodate it? Yeah.
I have a question. So, up on the east hill, where Rick's Automotive is, there's that road that by sheens...
Yeah, Second Street East, yeah.
Perfect, Second Street East. So, it's gravelled, and it's not, part of it is gravelled, and it's really in horrible shape, it's not great.
Yeah.
Are, do we have plans of fixing that?
Are you, you would talk south of Rick's Auto, then?
Yes.
So, Ninth and Second is the intersection just past Rick's Auto.
All those trailers.
Correct.
That's the road I'm speaking about.
Yeah, so it's oiled? It's oiled just from, just barely to the south of Ninth Avenue North is oiled. And now, I think we put dust suppression on it when we did Homeseekers this year, from that point to Homeseekers.
I understand, but my point is, when we live in a town, my parents lived in McGrath, and they paid taxes like everybody else, but they lived over by the tennis courts, and by the tennis courts, that was the only area at that time that wasn't paved and had really nice roads and everything. When they moved to Cardston, that's one of the things they loved about it, is that Cardston's known for taking care of our roads. I realize how much money we're talking, but I feel like, not that it even has to happen next year, but I feel like we have a few different areas in town, these are taxpayers, they deserve just as nice of a road as I do in front of my house, is how I feel.
One contention, one thing I'll just throw back to consider, is that you paid for the value of a paved road, and they did not.
I understand.
That's one of the arguments that you, you may have, and by the way, that doesn't mean I don't think we should look at improving some of those as rate pairs.
Right.
But your lot is worth more than theirs is.
Right.
Because you have more permanent infrastructure in front of it.
Right.
That, that's just one of the arguments for that, and it's so difficult, Second Street East is a good example of, if we went in there, and I don't think you're even suggesting we go in and pave and curb and gutter and storm drains and everything, but when we do that, it's inevitable that now someone wants to subdivide, and now we gotta run utilities and connections, and now we're gonna dig all that up again. And that's always been part of the debate, let's use Seventh Avenue West, for example, on the north side of the Agro Dome, that that's liable to subdivide probably five or six different times in the next 10 or 20 years. And so, do you pave it, when you're gonna go dig it all up again? That's always the debate about paving before you're at your most dense population. Or developers will do it early to attract, they'll do it beforehand to attract sales, so that's why they do it then, but, you know, folks on Homeseekers and even Second, I forget the gentleman's name on Second, I just visited with him recently, he bought William Wolfe's old house, but, you know, we've had a good, long, a lot of long discussions about... Yeah, thank you, Mr. Nelson, about the condition of, of the road and the value it adds or detracts from, from his home, you know, and so that's always a, an interesting discussion, yeah, yeah, it's a difficult one.
So, with this plan that we have, the homeowners are going to have to come up with a significant amount of money in order...
If they were to agree.
If they were to agree to this. So, there's a lot of ifs in that equation.
Yeah, and, and even within, so once, let's say you as a council determine a percentage, let's say it's 60/40. So, let's say we take option B, which was $216,000, which puts Millings on it, okay? So, it rebuilds the whole roadbed, and we put Millings on there, and so it, it keeps the dust down, and it's got a solid roadbed, so 216 grand, it's 60/40. We, they, they would have to have a vote to agree to, to take on that 40%, and a percentage of them combined the rest, right? So, you can't opt out of it. So, if you're, if you're, if you two disagree, you don't wanna pay for it, but the rest of them agree, you're gonna have to pay for it.
Two-thirds, is that what that is?
Yeah, it's, it's two-thirds owning a certain percentage of the, of the total land, so that, so that one guy can't bind them all, or, or a whole bunch of tiny parcels can't outnumber the, the bigger parcels. But yes, Counsel Drew, that, that would have to go to vote, they would have to agree to that portion, we would have to determine the years of payment schedules, we would have to determine, and you're always gonna have us, probably a third of those people who aren't very happy, because they've been now compelled.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what's difficult, too.
All right, so counsel, here is what we need to determine. Do we want administration to move forward and to present the cost that would be to those people and let them decide?
It's reasonable?
It's reasonable? What do you think, Counselor Brown?
Well, I think they have to make a decision of some kind. If they're, if they're requesting us to do something, they have to be willing participants.
All right, so, are we in agreement that administration will carry on and presenting that to all the residents, let them decide, they will take a vote?
I need some direction on the, on the town participation in this whole project. So, for example, a whole get to paving was 350,000, right? What, or Millings, we can, we can look at all the options, but I need some indicator of how much the town would be willing to, to stand in that total project.
Are there grants available out there right now, or...
Well, it's a road, you can use your MSI, you can use your federal gas tax fund, but you're using them at the expense of something.
Yeah.
Right, but if it's your priority, that's certainly appropriate, no, no question.
I built a new house 12 years ago, and the town didn't contribute any part to it, so I'm wondering why certain groups would get the town contributing, unless it's deemed as a necessary road, which it may or may not be.
Well, that's the whole problem, this is why we had the count done, because we were curious to know, is that honestly used as a thoroughfare, or is that just dust that is created by the locals?
My feeling on that, because I use that road probably once a week, and I haul out my grass to the dump, and I think that's probably, most of the three roads are going to the dump from the west side.
Well, wherever they're going, they're using the road, they're creating that dust.
But again, they're using Seventh Street to get out of town, so I, we have to take that into consideration. It's the only road that goes all the way through town, except for Main Street. There's just a lot of variables out there that we're gonna start saying, well, we'll cover this percentage if you cover this percentage. Where do, where do we stop, where do we start?
Well, that's a very good point, therefore the question. Counselor Silk?
So, what are we using as comparables? We're saying, well, 60% of the people that are using this aren't locals, well, are 60% that are using Fifth Avenue that are whistling by my house, are they locals?
Right.
Or Third Avenue, are they locals?
Seventh Street?
Are they locals? What's the comparable?
Okay, so, all those are very, very good questions. Honestly, I don't have the answer.
And then Counselor Court, you made an interesting point I hadn't considered, when you bought your lot on 8A, you probably paid for the full value of the asphalt in front of your house.
Oh, I did.
Right, that was included in the price of your lot, and that's why you didn't pay $25,000 for the lot, right? Because curb, gutter, sidewalk, asphalt, everything was in there, but...
Everything was included in it, you know?
Yeah, that's interesting.
So, what would be, what, from an administration perspective, with dealing with an issue that way?
Yeah.
What would be your recommendation to counsel, then?
Well, I always get to defer to you.
Yeah, except that a good cop will tell you, you got to give us an opinion.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. For today's meeting, it was, what does that percentage look like, and where do you wanna go? And we can only work on the data we have, we could probably do this again and find a 10, 15% swing in the numbers, but you could do that all day, every day, before you land on a number, and so, one thing we could do is if we pick, we could pick a number, it wouldn't be binding anyone, and take that number, and maybe there is no appetite anywhere up and down that avenue, even at 50% or 40%. And if that's the case, you may decide that you're not even discussing it anymore.
All right, so...
But that's it.
So...
Right, we'll help with dust abatement as we can.
So, why don't we then go middle of the road, 50/50, and let's try to see what it looks like?
We've seen this before, one other time since I've been here, it was on 10th, when we were gonna go to local improvement, and we took them a proposal on a new road, new drainage, everything, and it didn't matter what the percentage was, everybody was no.
Yeah, but they still wanted the service.
So...
Then, then they're some of the nicest homes in the community in the whole town.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Counselor Bantry.
Mayor, we are responding in 20 minutes of discussion on a road that one individual owner complained about. We took care of it by putting that dust abatement on it or whatever. Now, we've been confronted, like you said, Jeff, with other roads in this community, where all the participants along that road signed a letter that they wanted dust abatement or whatever, and that's Seventh Avenue, going out to the Ag Dome.
Yeah.
Or whatever it is. I think it's Seventh, isn't it?
That's one we did some oiling on, we did some Millings on, yeah.
But, but what we responded to with this situation is one letter from one owner on that property. Now, if, if I would have wrote that letter and wanted something done, I would have gone along to every owner of land on that road and said, hey, are you in agreement with this? This is what's happening. I think that we're opening Pandora's Box.
Well, if I might, Mayor, I think, I think we can reasonably manage a letter that says, based on this split, the council would entertain, you know, using tax funds to pay a certain percentage, but that would leave you as the homeowner, based on your frontage with X dollars, please tell us in the next 14 days whether that's something that would be agreeable or not. And counselor, we might, we might find it's, it's 1 to 15, I, I don't know, I don't know.
And that's exactly right, and maybe the solution might be, every year, try to do some dust abatement and do the best we can to kinda fix the potholes and whatever else in this...
Can I just ask one question? So, do we, do we do any grading on that road, and so we do all that kind of stuff, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, it's not like it's just left there?
Yeah, and, and again, it's a tough one, particularly in the spring, because it's soft, it's really soft, like...
It looks like mobiles.
This spring, for example, we stayed off of it with the grader intentionally for fear of sinking outside. You know, it, it, it's got roadbed issues, there's no debate.
Counselor Brown?
But it is our job to do our due diligence on something like this.
Yeah.
Which we've done, and there's nothing wrong, there's nothing wrong with returning and reporting, there isn't. And so, I think, I think that, I don't feel like it's Pandora's Box, I feel like we've got information, we kinda know what we're talking about a little bit more now, we're throwing them at them, they could come back and say, great, 50%, we'll all do it, and we could still turn it down, because we're not putting this, this is just putting it out there, that's all we're doing here. I, that's what I think we should do.
Jeff, I just wonder, the areas that are extremely weak, is it possible to kinda fix the bed of that chalk area? No, I'm just wondering.
Where do you stop, eh?
I'm, I'm just wondering, because in, in a spring, I've been through there, it's, it's really terribly bad. We done that on 10th, there were just small areas that we fixed.
Yeah, I, I just can't speak, I'd have to ask Brandon to have a good look at that. Is it logistically possible? Of course.
Because that's what I'm wondering, I mean, we, we don't really know what it would cost the town either to kinda do that, and if there would be a participation from those people on just fixing those areas that are so soft. And I'm wondering if that is something we should maybe, for the future, try to kinda look at. Anyways, at this time, we should have a motion for a direction, direction to administration to...
Can you include the town participation percentage in that, please?
Right. Counselor Drew, you wanted to do that?
So, I will make a motion to have administration do their workup for the costs involved, and the town having...
A participation of 50%.
...within that agreement.
Of what percentage?
50%.
50%, yeah, that's what we wanted, right?
All right. Comments, questions?
I can't support 50%.
Okay, those are just numbers, counselors, because we got to start somewhere, and...
Start at 80% then. I'm just, I've...
80% for the town?
So, they come back and say, fine, if the town's gonna pick up 50%, we're all for it.
You got, you got to base it on something, what the numbers are based on is more or less the due diligence that was done, and to kinda reflect that, that's all what it is, and it's lower than what the numbers show. So, and I appreciate that, but there is a motion on the table, thank you for your comments. Okay, so let's vote. All in favor? Okay, against? Thank you. So, administration will report and... So, administration will report and we'll see where we go from there on. Thank you. Seven B Main Street parking feedback. If you remember in a few months back, Counselor Brown wanted that to be discussed. And JD has some homeworks that is done for us. So, you want to present that for us?
Ah, yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, I had the, the privilege of going up and down the street, talking to the store owners. And I've given out two reports here. The question was, should the parking stalls be made wider? And just a little bit of context to that, our current stall sizes are two point six five meters or eight, foot eight inches, which is the same as the standard stalls in Lethbridge. In two thousand and fourteen, however, our land use bylaw was updated and the size for new stalls was increased to, the size for new stalls was increased to nine foot two inches. So, new stalls are to be painted in, at that width in town now. One of the interesting findings from going up and down the street aside, from getting the opinions, was that there are actually a number of stalls that are quite a bit narrower than, than the two point six five meters. One of the store owners and I measured some of them in front of his block. So, I found that interesting. Generally, the comments is, we don't want the stalls to be widened. There's a lot of concern about the number of stalls on, on the street. And on the, the second sheet that you have, there's the impact of if we were to redo or increase the, the width of the stalls. And so, just quickly to help you understand the second sheet, the blue number is the number of stalls currently on that block section. And the red, yellow and green numbers would be the numbers if the stalls were widened to the corresponding width, two point eight, two point eight-nine or, or three meters. So, in most cases, widening the stalls would mean losing one stall on the block. In some air, some blocks, though, it would mean more than, more than that. And the, again, the general consensus is that we don't want the stalls to be increased. There was some concern about the, the clinic moving onto Main Street and that bringing a lot of traffic. There was some concern about people making sure they didn't want to lose their, lose the handicapped stalls as things, if things were made wider. But there was also consensus, or there was also some common comments that, you know, making them wider wouldn't hurt if it only meant losing one stall. But, so that's my report. And if you have any questions about the numbers, then ask.
So, essentially, from eight foot eight inch to nine, eight feet eight inch to nine feet two inches, there's about four. How many would we lose if that was changed?
So, that would be the move from the blue to the red numbers.
Okay.
On the, on the second. So, you know, generally, it's one. In some blocks, it's not even losing one, but in.
Okay, I get you.
In one block, it, it does lose two, two stalls.
So, in general, the overall loss on one side would be two, four, six, eight. On the other side, six, eight, so sixteen spot, that's a lot.
Seventy-two percent don't want it, so I don't think there's a debate.
Right.
Well, it's because there is such an indifferent population that really makes a difference, right?
There were split opinions and that move from the blue to the red numbers would be moving to be compliance with what the current bylaw, the current sizes in the land use bylaw, so.
Okay, all right. And Counselor Court, your point is well-taken. The merchants don't want it, so, should we want it for them? It doesn't make sense, right?
Yeah.
So, JD, thank you for that due diligence. You surely went at length to give us good update on that. Thank you so much. Counselor Brown?
Just a comment, and I won't use any names, but I've talked with one particular businessman here in town who I have watched consistently double park over the line. And I give him a piece of my mind and he said, I'm not gonna change. He said, people, they, they park so close and they smock into my, my truck and I don't want my truck getting scratched, you know? And, and I said, well, you know, that's kind of a selfish attitude, really. You know, I mean, we're all at that mercy.
Officer for that purpose?
Exactly. And, and so, but anyways, I still see it consistently. And people do it.
Well, that's.
But, and, and I, that's why we have a bylaw enforcement officer.
Okay.
He comes along and he gets them a ticket, so be it.
Well, that's, you got the answer.
You know, but I, I agree with Counselor Court. The majority are saying, don't make any changes. Those are business people. So, why are we trying to?
All right.
Even consider it.
So, I really think the status quo is what it is.
Yeah.
New parking stall will follow the land use bylaw, nine feet two inches. And that's the way it will be. Yes, it's never pleasant when you get a ding on your car. Counselor Self?
Just wondering, we could take a recess for ten minutes.
It's actually a fairly good time to do that.
Food in fifteen, we just have some pizza again, but yeah, no problem.
Do you want to recess right now, Counselor? Or in fifteen? Right now?
I don't know, I'm questioning my bladder, that's all.
Don't question it. Don't question it, Counselor. Okay, let's take a recess.
I'll move for recess for fifteen minutes.
All in favor? Thank you. Counselor?
It wasn't me this time.
Go for it.